To the flag and had an opening prayer, so.
If that's okay, we'll proceed on from there. Let's have a roll call. And Alan is here. He'll be in just a second.
Okay, so roll call. We have Kerry Brady.
Here.
Jimmy Clark.
Here.
Chris Fuller.
Here.
Alan Moore.
He's here.
Alan Moore's here.
He's taking a B C powder. Gave him a headache. Alright. Everybody's here. Everybody has their minutes in front of them? Anybody got any questions? Did you get an extra set for his minute book, or you just have to use your set for the minute book?
Two in my packet?
Billy.
Two in mine? There is two in mine. Look at that.
So you're gonna, yeah.
Well, we need to send these two around. Anybody have any questions? We have not moved the CDs, bought the two big CDs yet because we gotta have the minutes approved first. And when you take those minutes back, would you get the rates for next month's meeting for the rest of the stuff we need to put in CDs?
Yes, sir.
Pass that down there. When y'all approve them, y'all start signing them, please. We're looking at approving the minutes right now, Alan.
Looking at what now?
Approving the minutes.
Oh, okay.
First thing in your package there. The smaller CDs that were already CDs, you did get taken care of, but the Million Dollar Out of Water and the Million Dollar Out of Street CD will be purchased when the minutes are signed this week sometime.
Yeah, I can renew minutes. I just can't get new ones without, or CDs without the minutes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three minutes.
You have a second?
I'll do that.
All in favor?
Aye.
So approved. Financials are in front of you. Anybody got any questions? For February, he will be here. Brandon, when is he coming to do March? He'll be here this week probably? Next week? While y'all are looking at financials, the exiting audit for twenty twenty-one is, they're about to get, the state's about to get the twenty twenty-one audit finished. We'll have an exiting audit and the date, they'll send a letter on that. On the twenty twenty-one audit.
It'd be better if it did. It'd look better anyway.
You got to re-sign. Alan messed it up.
I missed something?
Yes, sir. So, if you could sign above your name, please. I'd appreciate it.
I thought that was the only place that had blank. Maybe it wouldn't.
Alright, the balance sheet for February. Everybody okay with it? One thing for sure, nothing can change in it because it's already money spent.
I'll make a motion. February's financials.
Have a motion to accept February financials or balance sheet. You have a second? All in favor? Okay, the next item on the agenda. We bought the track hole that y'all approved last meeting, but I need y'all to approve the trade-in of the old track hole and the trade-in of the trailer for the difference in price of the trailer and the back hole. Those are not approved. That voice called each of y'all because Kat had offered you twenty thousand dollars in trade on that old track hole and I voiced mailed all, or voiced to all of y'all because I had to do, y'all had to figure out something to do on it and everybody gave me voice approval, but I need y'all to vote on the approval for that and then there was.
I'll make that motion. That we approved both the transactions.
And then the additional five thousand dollars for the swap in the trailer.
Yeah, I would say, what do you call it?
Okay, have a motion to accept the trade-in on the track hole and the five thousand dollars for the trade-in, the difference in the heavier trailer.
Y'all second that.
Have a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay? Next thing on the agenda. The city has land for all of y'all who knows at the, down by the cemetery and the trestle. We have land down there and we have the John Benjamin Park in the area. That's before you get to the trestle. But the city, if everybody knows where the syrup pond is, on, at the trestle on towards the cell barn, that land is the city's back in there. We have some canoers that make a living, bring a lot of tourists to town. Want to see what's the possibility of being, of them helping clean that area up for public use and then so they could drop off and pick up back there, not in the John Benjamin Park. And they're here. Which one of you guys want to go first and explain something about what y'all are wanting to do? First off, who else with a canoe places? Got four people back there. Would y'all introduce yourself, please?
Pete York.
Thomas Kamerzki.
Dane Wright.
Kevin Ryan.
Okay, and they have got some proposals they want to present to the city, so who's your representative to talk?
It's not the John Benjamin Park.
No, this would not be the John Benjamin Park. It's gonna be on behind, the John Benjamin Park stops at the trestle.
No, no.
Not John Benjamin, excuse me. What are we calling that one down there?
Trestle?
Trestle Park. I said wrong. It's not John Benjamin. It's at the river. Okay, I'm sorry. That's my fault. Okay, Thomas?
So, yeah, we would like to, if y'all would be willing to work with us, be able to take some tubes in and out, like Dane was putting tubes in. I'd like to take some tubes out there. You already got a parking drawl to begin with. That's something that gotta be addressed either way. I mean, the cemetery's always putting signs up there, going tow vehicles and all that stuff. Don't want to park no vehicles there besides driver bus. That'd be it.
And it would be behind, in the area we're gonna open up that's not part of the park today.
Right.
And we'd open that area up and actually the public can start using it. I think the rights have told me that they would put canoes in, we'd have a girl down there and they'd be responsible for picking up the trash on the park. If we allow them to do it, their girls would make sure that whoever's left trash for the day, whether it be their canoers or other people, they'd pick trash up every day during canoe season, which I think would be a good thing. So the city don't have to go picking up trash. They'd get it all bagged up and up to the trash cans for us and we'd have to go get it, but they're in agreement to do that.
So you're just wanting to, you're wanting to pull out tubes, you're wanting to put in some. Go ahead.
And there's no parking, there's no nothing. You're gonna drop them off and you're gonna pick them up. Right. No public people are gonna park it down there.
But you already don't have canoe buses running in and out of there all day long, ride or run?
There will be buses doing it.
What is the income to the city gonna be and what's the current rate?
Thing else I was gonna say, we've all discussed it and we'd be happy to pay a permit fee if y'all figure it out.
What's the current going rate like down the river? Like to pick out tubes, about dollars?
On the tubes, it's ever worth from a dollar to three dollars. And canoes, they worth from three dollars to five dollars. Personally, I'd prefer just to do a permit fee.
That's what I was thinking, just come up with a fee.
That way, y'all ain't gotta worry about if anybody cheating you. We don't have to worry about trying to keep up with every number of boats or tubes or whatever.
What's your average of tubes and average canoe? Just average. Just give me a figure.
You can't go up, but the nice areas are drought.
I see, so it's all, that's hard to answer that very accurately, but just say, you know, on weekdays, it's probably fifteen twenty. Weekends might be a hundred on Saturday or something like that. Sundays is gonna be way less. That's just pretty much normal. Holidays, it'd be more than that probably.
So are you going to have, are you going to have, has there parking down here?
None.
So none of them will take any of the parking that we have now?
No. You already don't have enough parking as it is.
No, they don't.
Yeah, and I mean, that's no, that's no canoers. Nobody parking rigs down there. You know, that's all public people and I mean, you already got a problem parking as it is.
The city, the city needs to go in and add one culvert. And where we used to have, the city used to have a lift station down there that pumped over into that pond. That's not the cemetery's. We've got a good area there. We can get more parking for public. These guys are not looking at that, but as we address this problem and you're gonna have, if people watch what they're doing on the gravel bar, you'd actually, you're gonna open up and, big gravel bar back down there. You're gonna have some parking on that, but you're gonna be parking on a gravel bar. Somebody gets heavy with a lead foot, they're gonna get stuck. If they drive carefully on the gravel bar, they can get in and out of down there. Would have more parking over there. We could definitely have more parking this year by putting one culvert in and go up. I've looked at that with Billy T. and Billy was gonna do it and just didn't get around to it. Billy didn't know that the city had that land up there by the cemetery. There's probably, what, three hundred foot back from the trestle awards, that land that the cemetery's not parked on on that side. We can probably park forty cars, fifty cars in there.
Thomas, explain to me exactly what you're talking about. Are you talking about to the east of the trestle, to the west of the trestle bridge?
Upriver from the trestle.
Upriver from the trestle. So where would you initially access off of seventy?
Same place. Got access, got to come to the park.
You're gonna be going down, you're gonna be going down the road where the people gathering, parking?
I would swing the toe unless there's a way to come off that trestle road, you know?
I don't think, I think that's too steep.
Right in here where the trestle goes through, there's a big open spot right there where people, years ago.
Yeah, I remember that.
Years ago. That's where your access is gonna have to go in there and go around to the gravel bar over here where the river comes to.
At least they'll come in through the drive, go straight, and when they come out the drive, they'll go.
Has anybody been down there and looked and seen what we're gonna have to have, what it's gonna take, how much money this is gonna cost?
These guys are willing to help you get it cleaned up.
We just want the access, we want the permit, some permission, please.
And they'll help get that cleaned up themselves.
That's what we were talking about, right? You were talking about putting in the culvert, you're supposed to.
Y'all are willing to do that? We're not, we're not here to make money off of it. Y'all gonna provide us with.
That's what I'm saying. If they're gonna put in the culvert.
You're gonna bring more people in by doing it. It's not gonna be out there everything else. There's gonna be more money coming in whether we like it or not. I mean, it's just how it is.
And it's gonna open up parking.
It's gonna help you.
I mean, it's gonna help with parking. It's gonna, it's gonna help businesses, which brings revenue.
The only reason I'm for a permit is because then if you open a can of worms, well, why do they get only access to it?
But they would. I mean.
Well, they're the ones that allow the full canoes out.
Well, the guy's vast.
Yeah, but I'm just.
Personally.
Let me ask this question.
I personally don't think you need to limit any of the businesses in this area that are providing a service to get in and out of the river. It's part of tourism, guys. We need to get access in and out of the river. We don't need to just limit, say, okay, you two are the only two that can use it. If the other guys wanna come in and help clean it up, more fire to them. I don't think it's, the other guy, I don't think it's gonna be beneficial to him.
No, I know he's like, this fuck.
Because of where he's located on the river. But I don't think we need to sit here and limit it to just you two canoeing people. If there's another canoe company comes in that needs to have access to it. I think the problem before and the reason the council voted out before is the rigs and the trailers were parked there and you were taking up space for the parking. This is gonna be an area that's not open and y'all put your trailers back up behind against the pond and won't even bother the riverbank.
Exactly.
I think.
So this is your driveway where you.
No.
Right here.
No.
Where you drive down and it comes down and opens up right here that was parked?
If you open that up, a lot of your regular people that are using that park, we're gonna double the size of the park, if not more, on river access to them. Because once you open this up, we're not limiting the canoe guys. Everybody's gonna get to go back there and use it.
They're talking about opening that road back there so they got access then. They're talking about.
It's whatever liability the park is right now. It's not any different liability then. It's the same area.
We own. It's a cemetery right here.
Just that it extends farther.
You're just gonna have a bigger area.
Which I think people will like.
We would like to be able to do an annual permit and, you know, we're not rich. We're working for, living like everybody else for five hundred dollars annually.
Well, yes.
You know, that's, that's like a gate or whatever. I don't wanna go out and spend ten, fifteen thousand dollars on tubes, bringing in tourists and everything, and then six months later, boom, I'm cut off. I mean, I think that depends on access to the area and it will generate tourism dollars.
Are y'all fine, are y'all fine with a five hundred dollar permit for the canoers to pick up and drop off back there?
Yes, per year, yeah.
Per year?
And they're gonna help with maintaining the.
They're gonna help maintain it and all that too.
And all those things. Right.
I agree.
I think that's more than fair and the public's gonna have access. I think it's.
And the other thing, if we're paying the permit and people start complaining about, well, you're letting them in there, why, why, why? And you say, hey, we're paying the permit for that access.
Right. Right, sure.
Alright, are y'all two? You two over there listening, are y'all cool with five hundred dollars permit a year per person to help get cleaned up?
Let me just tell you my thoughts.
Are y'all, are y'all gonna help maintain this thing too?
They're putting the culvert.
Let me just tell you my thoughts if I can.
Go ahead.
Maintain it the rest of the time because because maintaining it throughout the summertime, five hundred dollars ain't gonna, you know what I'm saying? Us bush hogging, us cleaning, us, you know, you know what I'm saying? Are y'all gonna help maintain it as well? I'm finding that wrong. Because five hundred dollars is not gonna cover us bush hogging and, you know what I'm saying? But if they'll help pick up some of the maintenance on it.
Wherever we own, our insurance cover is, I can't really know, so.
I mean. There's just been really much bush hogging or mowing naked down there. I mean, we're taking out some underbrush.
Once you get the underbrush thing done, there shouldn't be a lot of bush hogging to do down there.
People get to driving, I wonder if I might be able to get.
Also, we need a speed limit under there. We do. Just need to be one there.
I think our speed limit signs up in there, Donna.
Excuse us. I just need a minute.
They just need to make sure that they go fifteen miles an hour and not fly.
Billy, I'd like to elaborate for a second.
Go ahead.
The, I'm friends with all of them, all, all you guys, but my, my, I mean, number one, I kinda, I know where it's at. It's off at, if I understand you, that's off that big rock that everybody jumps off of all these years, right down in front of, right, the Joneses' house, Billy Jones.
What we had in mind, and I'm sure it's probably what you're thinking too, is probably going across straight off of that paved parking lot and going underneath that trestle. And cleaning that up right through there.
It wouldn't be getting close to the river.
Back here and open up some parking for them, but.
That rock's on the other side of the ground.
You're talking about the. We're talking over.
No, no, I'm talking on, I'm talking on this side. You're going down the road, you get to the cemetery, you take your right, you go down the paved access. Is that right?
Yep.
So we're gonna, you're gonna have, I'm just playing devil's advocate. So, so you turn and you go down through there, you pull, you pull on, you got a van pulling a trailer or whatever that's waiting on somebody, or you got somebody waiting on somebody else and they're, they're, you know, and they're down there. I'm not necessarily opposed, for it or against it. I'm just, I, I just hate to see us commercialize that piece, that piece of land right there when there's river property that can be purchased down the river that can be commercialized. I just hate to see us commercialize that, but I see a lot of little bitty kids about this tall. They're all swimming in the river and.
That's why we're gonna go past that.
But you're going to go right through them to go past them.
People drive through there every day when they're down there swimming. Actually, I'm just speaking. I'm not trying to, I'm just saying, you got, have you ever been down there on a Saturday? There's kids running there wearing cars in and out like this all day long.
Yeah.
I'd love to put a strip across there to see how many people going down.
What, what's it like, I think? Huh?
I'd say I'd love to have a strip to see how many people go in and out of that place on the weekend.
Yeah, I just was wondering if we didn't have a better option than that right there for the city rather than doing that if the, because you get all the people.
You'd have to re-structure your parking lot if you did that.
Jimmy, most people are, not most, but a lot of people are disorderly and drunk when they get through fucking river and actually it's their day off sometimes. So you've got that, that you're, that issue, and then you've got your access issue, then you've got your small kids issue, and then you've got, you know, is the culvert washed out? I done it last time. I just, I could see. I think the city. I'd have to walk it out and look and see what is.
Would y'all be picking the people up and taking them back in the buses so they wouldn't be driving their truck?
There's not gonna park any of their personal rigs down there. Nobody's gonna be allowed personal rigs if a canoe pickup. There's not gonna be any, we're not allowing that.
Billy, how far does the cemetery parking lot, or cemetery property come down to the backside of the tables that are there when you first drive down, the ones on the right? Does it go all the way down to that Krista hill? Or do we have some of the property where it gets on top of that hill out there? Or is that all cemetery to there?
No, we've got, you know what, pump station was.
Yes.
We're about seventy-five feet on up above that.
So we got some of that on top of that hill right there. We could, we could somehow or another.
Make a road there.
Make a road.
No, we don't come out anywhere to get on a road.
That's what I was asking.
Well, the pump station y'all were talking about a while ago.
That syrup pond's got an access here.
Oh, it's out of syrup pond or whatever. What is the access to get in there?
The access that we've got into that syrup pond is off of cattle lands.
Yeah.
So we can't, we can't open that. We don't have access off of that.
And the other way's the trestle.
River property down the river, whatever, commercial, that is strategically advantageous to us and to our, our lucky as far as property.
What about like?
It's not available. I mean, find any riverfront property anywhere right now is like gold.
I guess, I guess what I'm, what I'm saying is what about like, like Sean and Angela, for instance? You know, spend a million dollars on buying a piece of river property to do the same thing, strategically located, you know, for, for canoe rentals or whatever they spend. I, I just don't know that. It seems to me like that there's a better way that the city could make an investment that y'all could co-op to access off of something, if we think about it, access that we, we wouldn't have all them little kids running around out there with vans and trailers and stuff. I mean, I, I live on Baker Road. I see gobs of vans and stuff going down the roads every day and I'm thrilled because it's tourism for Glenwood and like she was saying, hey, it's good. So I'm not opposed to their idea by no means, but I, I, the part that bothers me is, is commercializing right through the cemetery. That part of it, commercializing. Right now, it's sort of private. There's no vendor setup. It's just kind of a quiet, nice little place. And I think that it might start off well, but it could wind up not being that great for us in the long run.
That whole place gets really busy. We've gone down there several times to that trestle area and it gets super busy. It would be really nice if we were able to have more of that spot for the public. You know, like we were talking about, that would be good, I think.
What's there is paved and finished and all that. What they're talking about is to the west of that.
Right.
Which is just gonna be crowded. That's what I was saying. I, I would, I would be in favor of us doing it if, if there was a way we could figure out to do it right. You know, like expand our area or something.
I think to some.
But I'm just one, I'm a minority, obviously, so it really.
No, no, I understand your concern. They're really good. We deal with it a lot. You come down there on a Saturday or holiday and you're trying to drive and there's kids walking in front of you. There's drunk people walking in front of you. We don't have real accidents because our drivers are good, but once again, it's a privilege, a privilege to be taken away. If we can't manage it, manage it responsibly, you can always just take it back. I mean, that's.
That's right.
You don't issue the thing.
Don't issue your permit next year.
You have the opportunity to try and then if you see, if you feel like, when the police that go down and control that area feel like this is not going well, talk with us. We, we will get on to our drivers. We will. It's beneficial to us and it's beneficial to you.
Oh, and the canoe people are good at giving us access, helping us with missing persons and, and they know all of every trick in the river and all that. And hey, I'm all about the canoe people, man. I live on, I got river property right down, just right down from there myself.
But listen here, you guys have the power to do it. You also have the power to take it away. So if it don't work and you look at it and you say, hey, this ain't going well, just hang it back out in the mud. I think you should have set things that we follow and as long as we follow that, we protect it. You know, if our, if our drivers are okay with speed limits, if we're keeping it fixed up, if we're maintaining it, I think we should have some protection in that area. But yeah, if we're breaking the rules that we talked to you about, I wouldn't blame you for taking it away. I'd do the same thing with my kids. So I, I think that's my thoughts on it. You should at least, I feel like be given an opportunity to see how we do with it. We're, we're pretty responsible people and this is helping us and that is our motivation. We're doing it well.
Alan, you said there was some land for sale. I mean, where is that?
No, I said there's land for sale down the river. It's just a matter of how much does a guy want to spend.
Down the river is logistically useless to us.
I don't know of any down there that, that available, you know, for.
Yeah, hey, I'm not opposed to you guys accessing that. I just, my, my problem is, is occasionally we'll go through there. We'll drive through there, make it circle or whatever, and it's just, it's real beautiful with all them, it's not commercialized. Nice little families are out there picnicking in the grass and playing and stuff. And I, I just, my concern is that if the city wants to do it, they do it from a different angle. Like, like really give y'all access that we wasn't trying to take away. I just think there'll be a lot of townspeople grabbing, a lot of phone calls coming in if we do it that way. As opposed to if we do it a little bit different, we could do it in a way that it wouldn't affect everybody so much.
What do you consider commercialized? Because they're not putting anything down there. They're just gonna drive a bus in and pick it up, pull out.
It's still, it's still fifty percent of a transaction. I mean, it's, you know what I'm saying? You still gotta take the trailer down there and load the stuff up. And regardless, there's gonna be the ex-wife or the ex, the girlfriend that's looking for the husband that's gonna be driving back. I mean, you're just gonna have you're just gonna have all this stuff. I mean, I see that, I see that at my house. People walking up the back sides, you know, and I, and it's a, I'm all for the canoeing. The river is, is one reason Glenwood exists, if not the reason. So I'm all about these guys back here. Everyone's my friend. In fact, his sister-in-law worked with him for nine years, probably.
Promotion for.
I've been down at the trestle a lot. I go down there a lot at lunchtime and stuff. And I am personally more comfortable with their drivers coming in and out as some of them, because they are, they know what to do than some of the people I have seen coming in and out.
Oh, it was good.
So I don't, I don't think their game would be a, the problem as far as safety.
No, no, no.
I would say, I'm just saying.
No, no, I'm saying I wasn't even insinuating they were the problem.
I know.
I was just saying to logistics.
So would you be, would y'all be willing, like, I'm gonna say, if I made a motion on the floor that we're gonna put, I can call it in writing, that, you know, y'all are gonna help maintain it, you're gonna help with the thing and you're gonna pay a yearly fee? And then if these work criteria are not met, we can, we can, the council reserves the right to pull your permit at any time. Would y'all all be willing to sign that? That's my.
And our drivers are all. As long as we have the protection, you say, hey, as long as you follow me and you know, but I mean.
Well, I'm not saying I'm gonna, we're gonna come and say you left a Coke can out there, you're done.
Well, you know what I'm saying.
Alan, if there was another way to get in there, I mean, that's what they'd prefer. I mean, it really would.
I think it'd be better for you guys than, than us too.
I agree with that a hundred percent. I just don't know how.
There's no way to go down, there's no way to go down the old, the old track, train trestle. There's no way to go down, there's no way to go down the old, the old track, train trestle. Cut a road down there.
I pulled a lot of pictures out of there. I had people that, there's a gas station down the river, and I spent a lot of time in one that got taken in the sex.
Can you re-say it?
Above the trestle, before you get to it, there's about a three-hundred-foot long gravel bar.
My motion, I just made the motion is that we would write up an agreement that, you know, that helped maintain it, help pick up the trash, help maintain it. And that they would pay a yearly permit, whatever you wanna call it, five hundred dollars.
And with the development.
With, yeah, yeah, and then that any time the criteria is not met, the council has the right to pull the permit. It's a yearly permit.
I second.
Any other discussion? Have a motion and a second.
I think there's a better way to do it, and we ought to investigate that, but we have a motion on the floor and a second, so. But I would like to see the same thing accomplished that everyone's wanting to see accomplished for these boys, because they do a good job. They're good people.
Okay, any other discussion?
I'm good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Three to one, three to one. Passes, okay?
What was the vote?
Three to one, three to one. Caroline, Karen Barlow, fun grant. Y'all been in Lake? Y'all got this packet?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
We'll figure something out and.
Yeah, that comes back and see.
Then, uh, yeah, we'll get, get a plan together. I would like, I'd like that to do, and that's something we can steal.
We can address this to go, I think.
Karen Barlow, y'all got this right here. This packet right here. Okay, Karen, let's go.
We'll try to get something better planned together, okay?
I gave each one of you the past and present of Benjamin Lake Park because in two thousand and six. Is when the first development of that park began. And we created a five-year plan of what we wanted to do there at the, the park. And if you notice the first set of pictures, it's very undeveloped. It's just, just an empty type lake. So the Arkansas, uh, Game and Fish donated a hundred thousand dollars for us to develop that park. And then we applied for a grant for a hundred thousand dollars to finish off the park. The city provided probably about thirty-five thousand dollars of in-kind labor toward the park. And as you'll see the pictures as they progress, that's what we started with. Um, we put the piers in, the picnic tables, the pavilion. And at that time, you did not have to have an engineer to work on a park project. And Frankie Wilson and I, we did, we did pen and paper. But we were able to, the Fish and Game Commission got their engineer in there to make sure that we did it right. We have been told that we can apply for a fun park grant, which is a hundred thousand dollars. In that hundred thousand dollars, the engineer is paid for, the grant administration fee is paid for. And the city does not, they're not out any money unless it goes over a hundred thousand dollars. The engineer's job and my job is to make sure that it doesn't go over a hundred thousand dollars. So, what, and last year on Easter, we had a hundred and fifty people come to the Easter egg hunt. This year, there was approximately two hundred and thirty. You've got pictures in the very back of all those kids hunting Easter eggs, and we ran out of food. So it is a well-used park. Uh, Billy and I have talked about it, and the only thing that's missing. It is ninety to ninety-five percent ADA accessible. There's nothing in that park that requires of any ADA accessible, except we do not have playground equipment. We would like to apply for playground equipment. We want that playground equipment to be ADA accessible. Um, we just did one over Daisy, and they have a wheelchair swing. Your daughter would love that. And it's awesome that, that you can roll a wheelchair onto it and that child can swing. So all I'm asking is, do y'all agree to submit a grant application for the fun park grant?
Where are you thinking of putting it? Just curious, in that circle?
There, no, by the, on the side.
The side pavilion would be a better spot. That way you use pavilion and come off it and it'd be ADA accessible. You'd have to bring the level up.
Yeah.
To that.
And then what the engineer does is they kinda grade that land as to what we can put there. They also make sure we have the correct amount of timbers and impact material. Because with swings, you've got a certain height of your swing, there's a certain height that the swing can go out and how far a kid can fall. So you've gotta make sure you have that impact materials. But that amount of money, you could have some really nice playground equipment.
It's a hundred percent grant if you get it. It's not gonna cost the city anything, other than we gotta prove it.
Other than maintaining it.
We gotta maintain.
Oh, we, we need to make sure we have volunteers, um, because we've already had some volunteers. And I know I wouldn't mind volunteering to, to do things there, and I know after our church has the, the, um, Easter egg hunt, they clean off the sidewalks. Because they ride on them. Kids play hopscotch. I mean, they play games. But that is one of the best-used parks. There's men that works, walks there every morning. You know, there's something going on at that park.
This playground area also want to be fenced off too?
That would be up to y'all. Um. It would be, it wouldn't be close to the driveway, but why would we wanna fence it off? I'm just asking that question.
Just know how little kids wonder if they're over in the playground, you know what I mean? Just wanna make sure everything's.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's close enough to the pavilion or would be that the par. I think so.
Or you could just put the backside of the fence so it looks like it's, you know, they can feel that way. Yeah, that's, that'd be my only concern.
Yeah. If you have a structure up, that's a good way for somebody to hide and be waiting.
Well, you're right.
And at one time, they asked us not to put hedge bushes near the playground equipment, because that's where kids can be drug into the. You want it where you can see them from a long distance.
There's not anything in the deeds or covenants that would keep us from doing that?
No, sir.
As far as, no.
Doing what? I'm sorry, the grant or?
Like putting the playground there.
Yeah, put the playground. There's nothing in the, in the, yes.
No.
Okay. Sometimes there is on some.
Yeah, I'm not, this land belonged to, uh, it used to be Derby Lake. It's always belong, it was the industrial park.
Yeah, I was just making sure.
Yeah, I, I don't think there's any kind of clause as to what you can do there.
No. Sure the game official go for is be a dad, but it's our land, right?
Yes, we have to submit a copy of the deed to them. You see, they've already funded us once.
Just to explain what I mean, like, you can't put us a single white trailer on this piece of land, but you put a, you know, or something. There wasn't, there's not anything that would keep, prevent us from it, doing that, that you know what?
No, the only requirement we had in fact to get money from the Arkansas Fish and Game Commission is we have a low grant. If you noticed.
Yes.
You got that little, you like, you got a low grant. That's where that, uh.
The bathrooms are on the one end, so it'd go over there.
But no.
You'd have to fill in this a little bit.
Uh, I think they even talked about putting a hiking trail, a nature trail.
Yeah.
Up through there, which sometimes there's great hunts.
It would come right off of the.
To clarify, what, I mean, in the deep transaction, when the city first acquired it. Follow what I'm saying?
Yeah, okay.
Now, I'm not talking about state grants or federal grants, anything like that. I'm talking about when the city acquired it, did the person that was behind, on the. You know, dispensing into that, putting any requirements of, preventing us from doing that.
The city bought that land, it's real clear.
Right, but you still buy it with different bank.
Yeah.
You're talking about like right there on this end of it?
Uh, right up this, let's see. There's a spot that where the, this is where the pavilion was built, and it'd be right out here.
Uh, hung on still in that pavilion.
Yeah, this is, this was before the pavilion was built. Yep, well, you can sit right over there. Yeah, the bathrooms are there, and then it would be to the side.
There's another picture on there too.
Chris, I remember building that.
It's gonna be.
Out here. Okay.
So they could sit there on the pavilion and watch the kids. That is in the middle of the pavilion.
You're right here.
Oh, that's the lunch table?
All right, so Alan made a motion to apply for the grant. Who did?
Alan did.
Okay, Alan made a motion to apply for the grant. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Paving project. Uh. They're gonna be here pretty quick to start doing their paving. We've got the street down here tore up looking for a leak, and we worked on her in the other area, getting everything fixed.
Hold on, you skipping the sidewalk?
We're gonna do sidewalk, oh, that's right, next sidewalk. Who's got the full sheet of paper on the sidewalks? I put a sheet of paper, we passed it around a while ago, but somewhere. The big one, the big map, yep. Yep, I have a big map. It's folded. I think I, I took mine out and laid it over there a while ago, so I don't know where he is. Hand the map back to you. I'm just gonna go over that. The sidewalk to nowhere. Uh, if y'all look at the, everything in red, the city did a twenty-year master plan. It's about twenty years ago now. Uh, and all the area in red, and all the area is completed. That's what we had done in three other phases of the grant project. You're doing. Everything in red was done in the first three phases of the project. Everything in blue is in the project that's gonna be done right now. And everything.
The fairgrounds, is that?
That's fairgrounds all the way up to, down to the city park.
Okay.
I know this sounds expensive, but guys, there's lots of culvert. We're fixing lots of drainage problems in there. There are tons of drain culverts getting put in there in the curbs and sidewalks. Then the other part of this, in the second part of that grant, you'll see the pink part that goes from Broadway to Third Street. That'll have retaining walls and all of that. Those are the two projects that's gonna wrap up. Uh, and in a twenty-year master plan, the only thing that was left that's not done in the twenty-year master plan. Would be coming down Highway seventy from the depot, I mean, from the post office. I don't know that you wanna do that. Uh, as you look at further phases, I think you need to relook at what you're wanting to do. And actually, the part that y'all voted on and did while Billy was mayor was not in the twenty-year master plan, but I think it was a lot better part to do next. Than any other part, uh, because that's tying Broadway and Third Street together. That didn't, my color didn't show up too good. That's a different color, and that's pink. That is gonna be done in, that's the second part of the contract that we're doing right now. So everything, blue, red, and pink will be complete at the end of this project. Does anybody have any more questions?
How, how, how much you think that that sidewalk's gonna get used on Tennessee Street? Because when you top that hill and you go down to Third Street, that's steep.
It's steep. I think it'll be, a lot of people are walking through there.
No.
Okay.
But that's, that is, that is the project, that is the bids that were done, and there's nothing, nothing, I just wanted.
Do you have anything going down seventy to connect the loop?
In the master plan, seventy would connect from, you'd come all the way out at the post office, you'd get on seventy, come all the way down to the depot, and that connects at Third Street. That was in the master plan, that's not done. That would be the only phase of that twenty-year project. And Brenda pulled the paperwork on that, and that was everything that was voted on twenty years ago in the council. With all the public meetings and all, I'm just bringing you up to date. Uh, as we look at another grant application, I would like to see the city go out on Mountain View Road. And go down to Smokey Bear Lane, because that is a dangerous road. On that side that the nursing home's on. I'd like to see that curb and go there, but that's something we'll need to discuss, what you wanna do, or if you wanna continue with the. The only thing left in the twenty-year master plan is that on seventy out there. The, a lot of this project, if you look at the Third Street project and the stuff that was on Lake Street, we fixed lots of drainage issues. The sidewalk gets to pay, it's eighty-twenty grant, you get all your sidewalk, it's not just sidewalks, you get all your underdrain fixed. These are very, very good projects. I just wanted to show y'all that and be, put it in your food for thought.
I hate to bring this up again, because I know I brought it up before. But on, at any point in time, are we gonna go back and fix Third Street?
All of the curbs that are messed up right now, I've talked to Andy, he's gonna get this contractor that's in here now. He's gonna give us a price on what it's gonna cost to fix.
Okay.
All of it. We got, we got little spots here and there.
At one spot, we got a bicycle ramp.
Uh, he will go back and look and bring us a price to fix all of that. So yes, that's being addressed. It's, I'm sure that contractor, he's on days right now. He's not gonna go in there and do something. He's not on contract for days, only gets spotted on contract.
Making sure we're gonna look at it.
We're gonna look at it, and I'll bring, I'll get back with y'all on that. They have not looked at it yet, but they are aware that we want that looked at. All right. Paving project that's coming up, the three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars we're doing. Uh, I went out and looked at Grant Farm Road. Y'all paved about three, y'all chipping seal about three tenths, seven tenths of a mile. Now, at the end of that seven tenths of a mile, we're gonna pave, and then immediately where we quit paving is where the roads tore up. And immediately where you turn off, the seventy, old seventy on the Grant Farm Road, the highway's tore up. Those are not fixing this. Do y'all wanna look at, the contractor will do under what his contract price is, more asphalting. If y'all wanna do more asphalting, we can get more done at whatever the bid price is today. He can get a price with us. I need y'all's direction if y'all wanna do anymore. Uh, I'm gonna get him to do, if y'all are okay with it, we went over there on, uh, Clay Street. And have replaced all the eight-out culverts. And I would like for him to fix Play Street, where we pour the culverts out, let him fix that. And then down here where, uh, what's that loop down there? It's Hill Strata Park, where we put that water line, sewer line in the other day. Huh?
Texas.
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 I'd like for him to fix Texas Street where we, where we did that sewer line.
Grant Farm Road, I was out there two, three times recently, like all the way, hung it up, but that's really developed it really nicely down through there, like.
Well, I just don't think we ought to do that two tenths of a mile and quit. Because we're gonna quit, it's right where the road's tore up. You can't get down.
How much more are we talking?
You probably got, you probably got two tenths of a mile by the time you do that, and you come back up, you gotta get back up off the highway where you turn off the seventy. That's tore up on the wings. That needs to be fixed. Uh, if y'all wanna get with me before the contractor gets here. It's probably can't ride together. If somebody, if somebody goes and looks and gets back with us. If we wanna do any more paving, I'm not saying do any more paving, if you wanna do any more paving this year. I talked with the highway department, uh, like the street down there where, uh, Chad's house burned.
Frisco?
Frisco. They said go in there on that and get that upper spot about ten foot, cut that out, let them repave that strip. Call that done, and then get chipping seal or the, the machine we sold to, in the auction the other day. To put the hot tar down, when you get one of those, he said, you need to chip and sell these cracking city streets that's already asphalted. Or get the tar and whatever that compound is, heat it up, melt it, but there again, we sold the machine. But Chad told us we could borrow it.
Billy, I hate to tell you, the machine we had was in the best shape.
But anyway, according to the highway department, our paved streets need to be, the cracks need to be fixed, or we're gonna lose them. We don't need to be paving them. He said chipping sealing is an easy way, but it's a mess in town to put pea gravel down and it's leftover. He said you'd be better off to get the, uh, tar, get a machine and go around and apply that.
So can you ask him how much to do that second, what you're talking about the entrance to Grant Farm, the end of Grant Farm, and where Clay Street's torn up?
You're probably gonna have to come back down, you're not gonna be able to just do them sides on that. You're probably gonna have to come up with a section. You're probably gonna have to do twenty-five, thirty foot.
What do y'all want me to have him look at?
Everything you just named.
Okay, you want me?
That's my opinion.
Huh? What else?
Look at what he's talked about, see what are their services.
What I'd like to do is, is look, find out some numbers on.
Yeah.
Finish and.
Do y'all want me, that's what I'm asking. Do you want me to talk to him about doing any more than what he's under contract? I need, I need, don't need me talking to him, y'all don't wanna do anything.
I said Grant Farm Road's looking nicely. There were some beautiful home spots up through there.
I'm not opposed to having him look at it, but I'm not agreeing to have him do the work right now, not without knowing how much it's gonna cost.
Right.
It'll be whatever the tonnage price is of what you're already under contract on. It may have many tons, but I don't know how many tons to tell you. Y'all wanna look at it, we'll get it looked at.
But I don't think you're gonna be able to just do them sides.
No, you're gonna have to go back down to a spot and cut off.
At least down to that dip where it goes, where that big culvert is down there. You're gonna. At least down to that dip where it goes, where that big culvert is down there. You're gonna, you're about to go a little way down.
Okay, if y'all want it looked at, I'll get it looked at. That's what I was asking.
Yeah.
I don't have a price, but I don't know how many tons it is. It's gonna be whatever the tonnage price is, what you're gonna let it for, that you're under bid for.
And that'll do Clay Street too, you said with the culvert?
Need to do Clay Street. You need, where we replace the culverts, and I think you need to do that down there where you place that sewer line, get him to fix those. Okay? I will get some prices and get back to y'all. The next thing, Mark Kaufman, and he wanted me to talk to y'all, and I don't, there's not an answer to this, because there's not a way to get city water there, and it's, it's up to him to develop, but I will present it to y'all, and y'all can tell me what to tell him. Michael Kaufman, if y'all know where Johnny Mitchell lives, Rock Creek Cut Off Road is?
Yep.
If everybody looks at that sheet, he owns a lot. Look at this sheet right here, he owns a lot in red. We don't have any way to get city water in there without a big expense.
Does he even have access?
He says he does, but he wants to know how much he can get three water meters put in there for, and I, our city water's across Highway seventy. If y'all look at this right here, city water's over here, you gotta cross some of his property to get to there. And that's not our responsibility with the deposit.
If you're gonna supply him with water there, you're gonna, you might as well offer it to everybody else. You're, you're not talking about just, or this is not just gonna be proposed as just three water meters. There's no point in doing that. Because you still got, how many residents back up this direction?
Y'all need to tell me what I need to do.
Wade lives up there, his son lives up there, there's several people up there.
They turned this down, they turned this down when we did the water system years ago. We, we could, got all that in the cost of the whole project. It's up to the developer to put his water lines in.
I would, I would, my first inclination would be, if he wants three water meters in there, have him pursue getting a quote of what it would take to get the line right there, and then the city put meters on it.
I don't think that's his problem. I think his problem's gonna be getting easements to make it that way. Because he's gonna have to have, he's, if he does that, he's gonna have to cross-
Mitchell?
Either Mitchell's or- or the other ones. Or he's gonna have to supply, or he's gonna have to bring a line all the way down here and come all the way up the backside. Yeah, Mitchell's here, this is the other guy. He's here. Oh, you know, he has access. Unless he has access, I don't-
What's the income in that area? Is it low income area, or is it, and would there be new ones?
His access has got the-
He's wanting to build three new cabins down in there on the creek. That's what he said.
But they're not residential houses?
We don't have it there.
Probably not.
Would you provide water to anyone else on that road?
Not right now. We've got everybody that was a customer at the time.
You probably better stay away from it.
How, how far is it from our blow off back to Kaufman Hill Drive?
We got water, we got that blow off down there at the end of where it turns up to, uh, Onill Loop. We got water down to Onill Loop on Rock Creek Cut Off.
Uh, there is, there's-
We don't go that far down.
No, we go, we're on the other side.
This is not a cheap project, and I don't, we're not gonna do, I don't think you need to do this for three water taps.
Oh, Lord, no.
Oh, we got water there, it's fine, man.
Yep.
We got an eight inch, we got an eight inch painting over there.
We definitely have water there if we come off the highway side. Yeah, you do.
Engineer'd have to do this too.
Engineer would have to look into it.
My lady don't have enough water, I'm just saying.
The, the thing that he was wanting to do is want to know if he could back the service tap connection, and I told him I don't think so, we wanna bring it to the council.
I've got two people that said they'd bring the ditch which if I bring them water, I said it doesn't work like that.
Myself personally, I don't see it feasible for three water meters.
Y'all vote on that, that's the way I'm gonna tell it to you.
There's a lot of, there's a lot-
The problem with this is, we don't have access to where the meters are gonna be.
No, we won't.
Unless you put the meters out on the highway.
You're gonna tell him you get easements and you get away, or you're gonna have to get it there, and we'll put your meters there.
Myself personally, if he wanted three meters, we'd, we'd, he'd pay for long side boars.
Yep.
And we drop them on these people's property, which we gotta get easements, and he's gonna have to have easements run across.
That's a big work.
That's a lot.
Billy, you can always let Diane tell him.
Oh, gosh.
I mean, he goes through, if he's willing to pay it and gets all the legal and done right, I mean, you can't really know.
Let me, what Chris was suggesting, y'all look back up here at this. If he paid for three services, three long side services, we would set the meter, three meters right there, and it'd be his responsibility to run three water lines in there to get to them.
I agree with that.
Y'all good with that?
If he can get approval.
Yeah, he, yep, no, it's not just him. We're gonna have to have approval to settle there as well.
Yep.
And then he's gonna have to have approval to run across to them.
And he's gonna have to pay to get the board.
And I, I, my suggestion is, if that's okay, I would say we would run, say, a two inch water line across there, and then run three meters off it. Don't run three services across there.
No, you just run one inch line.
With a two inch line, and then break off and do three meters. That's more than enough water for three houses, way more than enough water.
That would be, the city wouldn't be out any money to do it that way, they'd be up back even if you did it that way. Three long side services.
You're gonna make him pay for three long side services?
Long side, yeah.
Yeah.
Even though you're doing one, because it's three halves.
Are we not gonna have to offer the same thing to everybody else in that general area though?
That's why my other suggestion was asking what it would cost to run a water line up there and offer the service to everybody else.
There might be a good cash flow.
Yep.
Might catch a lot.
Nobody else wanted water over there at the time. I could get him to ask it down and turn us down, or we'd put water in there.
If they come to us, we'll tell them the same thing.
So, that's why I said, what is the load of moderate income for that area, which you can do the door to door survey. You can do a water line extension for the low to income, low to moderate income people, you can do a free hookup, and the grant also pays easements. But you've gotta have people that wants it, and they have the low to moderate income fifty-one pers, fifty-one point zero five percent or higher.
Within that, is there a stipulation to where we can have, if they want it, they signed a contract and they have to take it? Or they can't back out?
No, there's none.
That's another thing that's gonna kill you, because that's what killed us on a lot of the other water projects we did. Because, yeah, I want it, let me pay my hundred dollar, let me pay my hundred dollar deposit, we set you a meter there, and guess what? Still today, fifteen years later, nobody ever took it.
One project I have right now, just only four people are hooked up to it. You know, and it's like the, I had the million dollar project. But it's still the money where you can buy the land for the pump station, well, this was a sewer. The, the pump station and the L and I hookups to the low income people and the wa, and the sewer line.
Right. Gotcha.
Tell me what one did. That's all I need to know.
If he's the only one that wants water, I'm for the long side service, and, but he, I mean, like I said, there's a lot that, that's entailed there. I mean, if he's willing to foot the cost, I'd say we at least put him three long, he may, he's, it's, that would be my only suggestion. But I don't think he's gonna like the cost of it.
That'd be on his call then.
Can you do that to anybody else?
I would, I would think so.
You'd do that to any customer that wanted water?
I would think so.
You're not, you're not doing anything abnormal there.
If he's willing to pay, if he wants them three meters, but enough, he's gonna pay for the service, and he'll get the, you know.
The legal way. Long side service at his cost?
Yes.
Well, no, I mean,
Okay, I mean, I gotta build a record.
Rephrase this a little bit different, okay? He's gonna pay for three long side services.
Okay.
Because we're gonna set three meters. Even though we're only gonna bore ones, because it's gonna be a two inch water line over there.
He's just gotta pay for the three.
He's just gonna have to pay for the three long side services.
Three long side services for a two inch?
And he's looking at setting them, if he can get approval, set them up here on these people's property, that he has to run the line.
Well, he has to be up and have approval. Okay.
And so, we'll, we'll have to get approval too with the easements to set the meters there, because we got to have our piece of the property where we set our meters, and then he's, you know, he'll have to foot the rest of the way.
Alright. Have motion and second. Who had the made motion? Did Chris make the motion?
I made the motion.
Who made second?
Alan.
Alan made second. All in favor? I know what to tell you. Okay. Number ten, there's nothing for the city to do on that. That's the opioid, the national opioid settlement, and Lenwood signed up for. With the four, four, uh, people that are paying on it. I have no idea what that means, but we're signed up. The opioid settlement, whatever the state gets the money on it, city signed up for whatever it shares.
What is the opioid settlement?
Some of the pharmacies are, are-
Yeah, the pharmacies that are paying, Walmart, uh, CVS, uh, Walgreens are all paying money into this thing, and the state's gonna get money back, and if you don't sign up, you're not eligible for anything. Uh, the eligibility for it's gonna be, what are you gonna want to apply for the money for? If you wanna do something for, like the Narcan kits, no, they're already funded.
Okay.
So, we gotta do something besides Narcan kit. We may have a training class if, but if we don't sign up, we're not eligible for the money when it comes. It's not just gonna be a grant money, you're gonna have to do something to get dependency off of if we get money. But you're just signed, I signed up for it.
What can we use the money for?
You'd have to apply for a grant on that, and they'll tell you.
Chris, I have a PowerPoint, would you like for me to email it to you?
Please.
Okay.
Alright. Y'all are keep, y'all are wanting to move over to the other side of the street. If we get away, y'all agreed to deal away with the contract sometime, not yet. No, this right here is the cost I need you to approve. The cost of the equipment you're gonna have to have for over there is, the cost of the equipment, that's not him putting it in or anything, it's twenty-seven hundred and seventy-two dollars and a penny.
Better than seventeen-five, right?
That's what the cost of the equipment has gotta go over there. And that will also change the firewall or the server, not server, but the firewall over here. Because if he's gonna do it, we'll do a clean break from the other, so nobody can get in.
Okay, how fast will this stuff come in, and how fast can we do it?
I'm not gonna get, he, he can't get loose to sort of my anniversary sale, and then he's gonna start working Saturdays and Sundays on it after the anniversary sale. If that's what y'all wanna do.
So, we're still looking at, say, two months?
Yep.
Okay.
Unless, if I put him on that instead of putting him on sewer plant. Y'all gotta tell me which one you want fixed first. You wanna live the building or you wanna get sewer plant back?
Sewer plant, more important, in my opinion, I don't know about y'all three, but-
Y'all need to tell me which way you want me to start working, or you want me to get sewer equipment, that sewer plant all back online, or you wanna get city?
Order it all and put it in as he could, could he not? I mean, he don't-
Well, I can get this ordered, and if it couldn't work out there, he could be getting this hooked up over there.
You also gotta look at it once, six days a week down the store.
I'm just saying weather related, that's the door, some other miles.
If that's what you wanna do, y'all need to prove, and on the city's credit card with my name on it, this'll go on it. I don't know what city's credit card is used for. Because that equipment'll have to be ordered online.
I'm like, this is everything we need.
Over there and the one firewall, or the sonic wall, sonic wall or whatever, he's not using, he uses Uniqui, Uniquity.
Ubiquity.
Yeah, he's putting those, it'll change this one and put the one in over there. Plus the rest of the equipment.
But when this is set up, we're good to go.
Yes. The, your internet's already running over there, you're paying for the internet over there.
I don't have internet.
Is it in your packet?
No, I, I already got it.
I didn't have one, he gave it to me.
Oh, you didn't? Okay, I'm sorry. Y'all cool with that? Make a motion on it.
I made one.
Okay, Alan made the motion about the equipment for need for the other building.
And the sewer plant, whatever you need on that.
The sewer plant's just gotta get hooked up, it's just gotta go, start hooking back up. I don't know what you're gonna need on it yet.
And that's just gonna talk to this building, right?
No, this is its own, you're, we're gonna move, the server will actually move from here over to there. And then the, the firewall here will run all the police department stuff, but they don't have a server. Their is all individual PCs. The server will act, this server, now the server that's doing the video and all over here, stay over here. Uh, but the server, the city actually runs the water department and all that on, it'll move out of that room over to there. We're not buying any server, we're just moving. Having a switch over there, because you still gotta have a switch in here, you still gotta have sonic wall in here. But the server from here that's running the water department will move over there. Everything else over there being you.
Well, somebody's got seconded.
Either motion or have second. Any seconding, all in favor?
Aye.
Dustin Bissell never did get me the lease agreement down here, so we can't do that. They're ready to do that. Do y'all wanna discuss the uniform things again tonight, or y'all wanna put that off again, or what do y'all wanna do?
It's, uh, nine twenty-one.
Let's skip that till then. Table that, okay, we're gonna table the uniforms. Uh, Crystal, are on payroll?
Yes. So, right now, we're paying the guys every two weeks. And if I'm correct, even though they get paid every two weeks, when are they actually receiving a paycheck? So, it's two weeks, and then the next Tuesday is when they get paid. So, actually, they're all, they're, they're two weeks and five days out. Right? On receiving their check. Right. I unders, I understand. My suggestion would be, I mean, you got some of these guys that are out there that are working that live week to week, but they're not getting paid whatever nineteen days, when they're actually getting the check, putting it in the bank or whatever. My suggestion is, for these guys and everybody else, this would be for everybody, would be that they would, the time would still either stop on Wednesday, but they would start receiving their checks by Friday and get paid weekly, because some of them need it. That's the way it used to be when I worked here.
If you, if you stop on Wednesday and you have, the payroll on a Thursday, you have to have two days with this in two, it's an electronic way, might get done, you have to have two type.
Which would be Thursday and Friday, it would go through Friday.
So, they would have to go through on Monday.
Okay. Okay, then let's, 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 let's think about it this way. So, why not do pay from Monday to Saturday, or Sunday to Saturday? Then they would still get paid on Tuesday, right?
Someone's got a twelve pair of do payroll on Sunday.
Well.
If you gotta have two days within two, when you do, into it on the Thursday, you have to have two days. To the post check and for the money to go to people and goods, might be quite.
Is that just with, is that, is that with our payroll system? Or is that with everybody?
With everybody. Into it is what the direct deposit is meant.
Because the reason I'm asking is, my wife does payroll with QuickBooks for the city of Hot Springs. Her time's turned in on Tuesday, she submits it on Tuesday, and they're paid on Thursday. She submits it Tuesday night by five o'clock.
Yeah, if she submits it.
So, that's Wednesday, then they get paid Thursday morning. That's a day and a half.
Then tell me it's two days that you have to-
That's why I was asking, is it just your system or is it? Okay, well then, back a day up.
Well, choose, you can still get paid Friday for money.
You can still get paid Friday?
If you stop payroll on a Tuesday, whatever day you stop it, you gotta pay it next day, Wednesday. So, you gotta make sure you get it in the bank on Wednesday to get paid by Friday.
I, I'm just trying to figure out, and this, I'm just, between y'all three, okay, listen, and all of us, I'm, I couldn't survive getting paid every nineteen days. I couldn't do it.
If we need to go back to paying every week, that's what we used to do, but then you're gonna get these times set up within our rest.
It's fine. What are we gonna do?
It's gonna take me a couple of months to get all that back.
So, how'd you used to do it? When did time start and stop?
It stopped on, uh, what do you say? It stopped on, it stopped on Wednesday and then they got paid on the fall weekend, so it's every week, it's not a two week.
It used, when I was there, it stopped on Wednesday, and we could pick our paychecks up Friday. Now, I understand some of you guys are direct deposit.
They all are.
They all are, okay.
But the direct deposit's what's created that to be able to pick that up Friday.
That's fine, but if we back it up a day, you're- That's fine, but if we back it up a day, you're covered, correct?
If we back it up on Tuesday?
You'll be, they'll still be able to get paid on Friday.
Right, yeah, but I haven't fixed that.
Oh, yeah, and that's, and that's fine.
I, I, I'd like, I'd like to see us move it to Tuesday, cut off on Tuesday, and that way, they get their paycheck on Friday along with Chris. I think that's.
And that, and that's everybody. That's not just city worker. I mean, that's everybody. That's police, that's all you guys, that's people out in the field, that's. That's all you. You know what I, you know what I mean? I mean, it just, I'm just.
For being ladies.
Every nineteen days, I could, I, there ain't no way. I'm just thinking about that. I'm like, man, if Billy paid me every nineteen days, I wouldn't be there.
I wouldn't say that. You're sitting here for free.
Well, I'm just saying.
I do, I have one question that you might wanna check on first. If they're cut off, um, Tuesday, that means they're not gonna be paid for what they go on Wednesday to follow it. To have them have to give a short check that.
Not if you.
Well, you're gonna go from a two week, you're gonna pay, you're gonna get a paycheck a week quicker. Cause right now, you got two weeks.
The first one will be a short check, correct?
First one will be, first one will be a full, they'll all be a full check, cause you're backing it, you're gonna go back to, you back it up a week. Cause you're getting paid every two weeks.
That's why I was, thanks.
I was interested as far as waiting to payroll. That's the part where she can't really take off the four weeks, so we've gotta have someone else try and come payroll.
Working on that.
And if you've got a holiday, then you're gonna go with it. Especially not having a week, wide period, most companies have a week, wide period.
But that's, that's.
We don't have a budget.
That's the same thing, e- even if they get paid every two weeks now, if you have a holiday following it, it's still gonna, still will find you up there too, right?
All right, y'all make a motion for what you want.
I make a motion, we back it up, uh, to where the time ends on Tuesdays, and they get paid weekly.
I said it that.
Weekly.
Weekly. Instead of by week.
Y'all hear me? At least, at least you set up with the IRS.
So can I just put motion for a weekly paycheck? I mean, all that.
It all.
Cut off, all that stuff, that's not necessary for me, or is it?
Have a motion and a second to go weekly payroll. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. One thing that's not on the agenda that we need to address tonight, uh, leads online. This is in your packet. This is from the police chief. We used, we used to do this. This what gets them communication with, uh, wrecking yards and, uh, uh, pond shops. Of who's doing stuff, and who's pedaling stuff, and it lets them know what's going on. We weren't subscribing to this, and we quit.
I was gonna say, I remember approving that.
How much is it costing us?
There's a sheet in there, they're gonna pro rate this year, it's close to the buy.
About thousand dollars.
It's about thousand dollars this year, and then sixteen hundred after that.
So is it a program you gotta buy, or is it?
You have to buy into.
We got all of, everybody like the wrecking yard out here.
But this one to go pro rate too, since it's.
No way to that. But, Jimmy, the way it should work is any, any scrapyard, any pond shop, something like that, they capture all that information. And they won't, they can't palm that stuff off before they do records checks and all that stuff. I don't want it quit, so. It's a, it's a good tool to capture. What's that thing you do when you go turn in scrap, and they think you make?
Yeah, that's right.
It'll take all your, it'll take your ID and all that stuff, but if you're not involved in that program, then he doesn't have access to it.
So now he can look into it.
He'd be part of it. Y'all, this was part of, that was motion to do this.
I make a motion to do it.
I'm like, I second that motion.
Leads online, motion and second, was there to, all approved?
All right, we go.
Uh.
All right. Alan, we're all out to weigh in on water and sewer taps till next meeting.
What now?
The water and sewer tap thing you just wanted to talk about, I put it back on the agenda, you're all well.
Yeah, but I want about the first top of the agenda instead of the bottom again.
We're gonna cut that. Okay, you'll take that off the agenda for this time, put it on next time.
I'm about tired of this ability to maneuver.
And you have a motion to put them on top of the list?
I know, it's a BT maneuver, it's way, but.
Hey, don't do that to me now.
Twelve, thirteen, uh, and fifteen's gotta be put back on the agenda. They want it back at, close to the top for next meeting. All in favor of that?
Are you in favor of that lead?
Aye.
That's for another. Okay.